Agenda change because we have a guest coming with the GLY update and they're coming from quite a distance, so we're gonna go ahead and move that to proceed to follow this presentation which will be the Neighborhood Outreach Program. And Marc Barans, you will be presenting, you want to go ahead and get started?
So back in September, September 25th of last year, council had a study session with Longmont, John Clark, and he discussed their community and neighborhood services programs. And at that point, council directed community development to investigate the possibilities of similar programs in Littleton. So we did do a site visit to Longmont and did a ride along with John Clark and discussed their programs in depth, their mediation aspect, code enforcement, and kind of community neighborhood services. The other thing I did is I talked to several metro area cities, Golden, Aurora, Arvada, and I also talked to cities in California and Arizona as well and talked to them about similar programs and, you know, they kind of range from one end of the spectrum to the other. One of the cities I looked at was Riverside, California. They have, I think, around 400,000 people, so their program was huge. And all the way down to Golden, and theirs is relatively small. So kind of what we have for you tonight is kind of a hybrid conceptual program of what we'd like to implement in Littleton. And really, the -- read the mission statement, but really, the program is designed to allow neighborhoods to somewhat self-regulate by providing necessary tools and support and also to help them create a sense of community. The first aspect I'm going to talk about is, we're gonna try and possibly combine a couple of things. So right now, we do have an existing program called RPAL, which stands for Rental Property Association of Littleton. Typically, we have quarterly meetings. Usually, the folks that attend are apartment owners and managers. And usually, unfortunately, they're not the ones we want to bring in. They're the good owners and the good managers. So we do provide training, but, you know, we're also trying to reach those that aren't taking part of this program. So we're gonna try and combine, we're gonna call it kind of a neighborhood congress and the RPAL, and that, we feel, would allow for a greater level of connectivity between property owners, managers, tenants, and single-family homeowners. And probably the best example I can give you of where this target group might have the most impact is the Northeast Neighborhood, obviously. We will do training, provide updates from police, code enforcement, public works, things like that. We'll provide them information, and I'll get into this later, but on the grant program and any current grant project, the mediation program updates and other program information. So one of the things we'd like to do is create registered neighborhood groups. We're gonna try not to limit them on size. We don't want to say that's too small, that's too large, and we're, again, we're kind of basing that component from Longmont's presentation, and they've allowed the citizens to create their own groups and make their own boundaries and define their own areas. We'll be asking the groups to assist with the formation and upkeep of their neighborhood groups in order to create ownership and buy-in. So, again, we're not going to limit size, we're gonna try and have them define their own geographical area. We're gonna require two-thirds participation. And, again, they can define their own groups as long as they're not ostracizing any, you know, Joe on the corner that nobody likes, or as long as they're all-inclusive. We're gonna ask that -- yes, Peggy?
Yeah, so in terms of the participation, some neighborhoods have a fairly significant turnover, fairly frequent turnover in some of the houses. So sometimes they might be vacant, then they might be occupied, then they might not be occupied again.
Right.
So, and I'm thinking, for example, in my own neighborhood, our current neighborhood group has 17 houses.
Okay.
But I haven't met a few of the people that have recently moved in, just didn't get out to meet them yet, but I will. So I'm not quite sure that the two-thirds is a good number for at least some sections of the city. That may be a little high.
Okay. I guess to address your question from two areas, one of the things, like in the Northeast Neighborhood where we have a high turnover of tenants, primarily, we're gonna target property owners and managers. And so if we get them involved, hopefully, they can bring the tenants in to the group and have them participate. Two-thirds may be too high, I don't know. One of the things that I'll get into later with the grant program is providing assistance for newsletters. Again, we're gonna ask that the members, the property owners, the tenants, whoever they might be, you know, that they take an active role in keeping the group organized and letting the neighbors know, the new neighbors, that the group exists.
Well, let's go back again just to mine. So we've got 17 houses, we have a T-bone shape group. And so, you know, we can be aware when there's changes, whatever, but several of the rental places, people don't live even in Littleton. So having, some, I think, maybe live out of state.
Right.
So some of that seems a little tricky.
Yeah, I mean, a big component of the program is getting to know your neighbors and going to knock on doors. So, again, you know, city staff wouldn't have the time or the ability to do that, we would count on the groups to, you know.
No problem with that piece, it's just, when you said maybe having the owners, not the renters or leasers, be the ones that you're involving.
Well, I mean, I guess it depends on how quick the turnover is for the neighborhood. If it's like some of the apartment complexes in the Northeast Neighborhood, I mean, I think we would have to count on the owners and the managers to some extent.
Yeah, yeah.
But maybe in your area where it's not quite as quick of a turnover, we would count on the neighborhood groups to bring those folks in.
Okay. But maybe not the two-thirds participation, I'd suggest.
Okay.
Lower, but.
Okay.
I think that's, I think that's meant kind of as a guideline, and the idea is that we have kind of a cohesive geographic area. So if there's some folks that don't necessarily sign a petition, doesn't mean they wouldn't be included. But I don't think we meant two-thirds as a hard and fast kind of participation requirement or gate.
Well, and it says that you're defining, you've got a geographical area that's defined, so that can shift and that will help with the two-thirds, too. You can define that. One thing I do have to say, though, on a higher level of participation is the more, the higher level you have participating, the more successful the group is. When you, and the example of that for my, for me, is the Neighborhood Watch groups. When we redesigned that program and started forming those, and, you know, we've got 39 homes in my neighborhood, and all 39 are members of the Neighborhood Watch group. And it is an incredibly dynamic and successful group. If we had less than that, even half of that, it would not serve the purpose it's intended to serve. So I think, I think having a higher threshold, to me, is probably good in terms of success.
Well, and later in the presentation, I'll talk about the grant aspect of the program.
Yeah.
And so what we want to avoid, too, is serving a few people in their special interests. We would rather serve a larger group and the majority. So if we've got that higher participation level, we can hopefully, you know, accomplish that.
I'm just, I'm just looking in terms of some areas, like Debbie's and Jim's, you know, have a kind of, have a larger area that works. And ours, just because of the silly shape of our area.
Right.
Ours works. If there are only six houses in a cul-de-sac, and that's all anybody wants, I think that's good.
Right.
And ours, when we have our meetings, we invite everybody and then try to get them involved, but not everybody can come or does come or whatever. So I'm just wanting, I think, when you, the more people you can get, the better, but having some people is better than not.
Right. And that may, that may mean you start off smaller and you grow as you bring folks in to the group.
And this is, why don't we just let Marc go through the thing, because we do, we can have some discussion on this, but we've also got some guests that we need to make sure we keep moving. And I think a lot of our concerns and questions will be also addressed as he moves through this, so go ahead, Marc.
So we're gonna ask that the group provide contacts for the city. You know, in maintaining the HOA database in the past, we're counting on the groups to give us that information, so sometimes it's accurate, sometimes it's not. And then we want at least three representatives from the group, and I guess that might, you know, that may change depending on the size of the group, to attend one of the quarterly Neighborhood Congress meetings. Again, buy-in on their part, and we will provide training at those meetings. Some of the benefits, and I'll talk about the signs in a minute, we're gonna look at providing neighborhood identification signs, the trainings and quarterly meetings, the grants, city-sponsored and assisted neighborhood cleanup projects, and then we'll have, and, you know, we're working on it, but we're gonna have to create some kind of database where we can notify these groups and give them kind of a higher priority, just than anyone else surfing the web, looking at our website. So the neighborhood identification signs, from what the work I've done on them so far, I think they'll be somewhat similar to like the Lee Gulch sign, something like that. They're gonna be relatively inexpensive, because we can produce them in-house, and where we can, we'll attach them to existing, whether it be stop signs or, you know, street signs, things like that. So that part of it is not going to be very expensive, but I think it will give them a sense of identity and kind of boundaries and things like that.
Just a question on the signs. Some street signs in Littleton have an insignia of some kind on them, designating an area, so some works already do that on that. What was the criteria to get that? Because I think those are very eye-catching and tend to be an issue that brings them together.
Yeah, you're talking about the ones like where it says Bannock and it's got a fox or.
Exactly, down by Paul's place in.
I don't know what the criteria was to.
Swan.
Yeah, it's a swan.
To get those, and I don't know how they determined what different animals were gonna be, you know, I don't, and I don't know that it was that organized of a thing. I can check with Charlie.
At one time, we as an association went and applied to the city, and they had some criteria at one time or another, and that's how we ended up getting swans in our neighborhood.
Okay.
Would you just keep that one aware of, because it may be something that you can build on?
Sure. So the grants, if this program is something that council wants to move forward on, I think in 2014, one of the things we'll be asking for is 50,000, is 50,000 for the grant program. There's a couple of reasons for the $50,000 increment. I think it's to match our other grant programs, and from a grant management standpoint, makes it a little bit easier if we can mirror the programs and have the same dollar amounts. I will look at what we can do to leverage other funds, whether they be, you know, leftover CDBG funds, county, you know, and, I mean, there's all kinds of things that go along with that, but we will look into that. So for either the large or the small grants, they're gonna have to be a registered neighborhood group. And we're gonna look at, similar to the Main Street Grant Program, an 80/20 match, whether that be cash or sweat equity. You know, if they're building a park in a common area that's accessible to the general public, and they want to provide the labor or part of the labor for putting the park in, then, and there are calculations on how to figure that out and put it into a dollar For the large grants, we're gonna look at about $10,000 and concentrate on large common area and park improvements, and kind of the key caveats, areas must be accessible to the general public. Small grants, about $500, and that's where Peggy will get into assisting them with newsletters, maybe even if they want to do some kind of social media, website, something like that. We'll also assist with National Night Out and block parties. And then that $500 would also be, I think it would be great for neighborhood cleanup projects, you know, and I think when you bring that, kind of dangle that carrot, I think what that allows folks to do is if they've got a common area that's kind of in a creek bed or something and they've got trash in there, you know, if you bring in a dumpster, you bring in food, I think that helps to generate the interest and kind of get them motivated. And then community development, we'll staff and manage the, and audit also the grants. So the mediation component, what we did is we sent out a questionnaire to the police, the Littleton Police Citizens Academy folks, the alumni, and asked them, if there were an opportunity to act as a mediator and go through a training program, would you be interested in serving in that capacity? And we had several that would be interested in doing that. And after providing them the training, what I think that would allow, or what benefit that would have to city staff is, we have, code enforcement, myself, a lot of other folks, especially in community development, we spend a huge amount of time kind of going into these neighborhood disputes where these folks are going back and forth, back and forth, they're calling code enforcement about a car or a tire, when really, it's an issue that happened five years ago and, you know, so-and-so didn't return his lawnmower, or he brought it back and it was broken, and it's never resolved. So by providing volunteers who have the time to put into this and the time to go back and forth and keep going out there and kind of, for lack of a better term, handhold and babysit, that allows, you know, frees up city staff to do our job and provide essential So we would, we would provide the initial training, and then we would provide ongoing training. And we, you know, periodically concentrate on specific issues, whether it's elder abuse issues, evictions, neighbor-to-neighbor, HOA disputes, and those are all things that, at least I see on probably a weekly basis, if not sometimes a daily basis. And then we're gonna look at strengthening relationships with state and county assistants and just kind of utilizing them more than we do, bringing in mental health when that's applicable, child protective services, adult protective services, and just, you know, kind of strengthening those connections as well. So I've looked at a couple of different options. We've looked at a CSU, they haven't, I would say 90% of their program or 95% is online, at least for the graduate certificate. So we would have to decide what would be most appropriate for the staff person kind of assigned to the program, because it would be nine credit hours, which, three credit hours a semester would be a year, year and a half. The other thing that I looked at is the 40-hour certification, and that's certainly what we would want to give to our volunteers, and I think that's the minimum we would want to give them, plus the ongoing training. So CSU has that 40-hour certification, they've got sessions available throughout the summer months and maybe throughout the rest of the school year, they've got those down at the Metro Campus, and they're usually a Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, three sessions at eight hours or so apiece. Again, we would utilize police academy alumni and possibly even snow squad volunteers that are retired professionals that are interested in participating.
That's a great pool to draw, and they are truly dedicated and already vetted to be people we can depend upon, but I bet there's others out in the community that would be interested in the mediation part, that had no interest in the police academy or.
Sure.
Something else, so we really, if this gets rolling, we need to make sure we don't close the door on somebody that might be really good.
Absolutely, yeah. And there may even be some retired mediators or attorneys that aren't interested in the police academy that would be interested in doing this, and they may even be more qualified, certainly.
That's exactly who I was thinking of, we do have a lot of retired attorneys and mediators in the community.
And then kind of the last component of the program is, we may kind of redirect to some extent the summer cleanup program, and depending on, you know, how successful the neighborhood revitalization program is, if we do get a lot of neighborhood groups, this is just one of the tools we would use to kind of redirect that from just folks that call in that, you know, could certainly afford to have their refrigerator picked up, but, you know, we provide that service for them, which is great, but I think one of the things we would do is kind of take that staff and those resources and funnel them more towards the, you know, kind of as a reward for the groups that have organized and need the assistance. Yes?
Marc, when you talk about your second bullet up there, that, again, is a service we've been providing to our citizens that, when it is cut out, looks like it's a reduction in the services we've been able to provide. My question, I guess, is, at the end of the summers, are we still have a waiting list of people who want pickups done? If not, why would we want to scale it back? We want to keep these young men busy, we want to keep them doing a service to the community, and it would seem to me that keeping it for the whole community would be a benefit to all of our citizens.
Right. And I think we can do both. What, I guess, what we've talked about is, if you've got a week where you have, maybe on a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, you've got a registered, organized neighborhood group, and they want to do a cleanup, probably what we would do is block off those days, and if we got calls, put them out to the following week or push them back to the week prior. It's not getting rid of the program or eliminating free pickups, it's just kind of restructuring, redirecting that program.
But that's not why I read that.
It's really more about priority versus scaling back.
Yeah, because I read that as you're gonna, you're gonna serve the elderly and you're gonna serve the disabled, period. That's the way I read that.
Yep.
It does say scale back.
Yes, and that's what I'm objecting to.
Well, it says for free ones. Scale back on.
It's free now.
Well, but.
One of the, one of the things, I mean, this is a new program, and one of the things we're trying to do is get it implemented with minimum increase in expenditure, and then come for 2014 with a more robust program. And so what Marc's put together is trying to ramp into it without adjustment to base for 2013 for it. So all of the, I mean, part of this goes to Peggy's questions as well, as these are assumptions and moving into and trying things, but it's our program, so we can be as flexible and nimble as we need to be on that. But he was attempting to work within the budget, so that's part of this.
Yes, Phil.
Marc, could you maybe cover the launch and the timeframe and what's involved in that launch?
Sure.
And the reason why, because when John came and he talked about it, he said that was kind of key and that there was a lot of nurturing.
Right.
That was needed on that, on that side, and also some patience around expectations. So if you could, if you could cover that, because that's, I think, an important piece for longer-term success, is how do you get it started?
Right, absolutely. And I think if this is something council wants to move forward with, you know, right now with the funding we have and the hours I have, we can kind of push the program forward and do a kind of a soft rollout and kind of get people, you know, kind of ramped up for possibly what would come in 2014, get them, let them know, okay, we may have this grant program that's coming up, but in order to even be considered for it, we need you to get organized, these are the parameters, these are the requirements that we have. And, yeah, and the program may change as time goes, I'm sure it will, it'll probably, you know, morph into different directions to some extent, we may have to play with the, you know, the two-thirds participation, we may have to play with the geographical boundaries. One of the, one of the things that John mentioned in his presentation is, you don't want to have, you don't want to limit the amount of people or the number of homes, but you also don't want, you know, 100 different neighborhood groups that are just, you know, little tiny pinpricks and six houses here, two houses there, you know, that is difficult to manage and probably not very effective.
Given the, your comment on pinpricks, how do you see this fitting with existing HOAs, areas where there's no HOAs, and areas where there's dormant HOAs?
The existing HOAs that are functioning HOAs are not really what we're targeting. They would obviously be able to participate and benefit from the same program, but they're already organized, they already have newsletters, they already have email chains, most of them, I would think. And I'm thinking of like Oak Brook or maybe South Park. They already are there. What we're looking at targeting is the areas that have defunct or no HOAs, and the people are just kind of, you know, again, kind of the goal of this program is to help people organize and self-regulate so that they're more proactive than reactive in their, you know, when they're, when they're calling police, it's not just a phone call and I don't want to be identified, I don't, you know, click, it's, yeah, the neighbor saw this, we've all been talking about it, we kind of know the background, and we've been watching it, can you come out and check it out? And that's kind of, again, self-regulating, and it, go ahead.
So, help me with, who are the folks that are gonna hear the first word and what's that timeframe?
Well, we had a meeting, and it just, it's just circumstance that a few folks from the Northeast Neighborhood came to me and had an issue, you know, some issues with, or wanted, I guess, some more answers and things on safety, different things in the Northeast Neighborhood. So we had a meeting last Thursday, we did a mail notification for 150 parcels, I believe, and we had maybe 15 folks show up at the meeting. So what that tells me is we can probably broaden that boundary a little bit and get some more people to participate, but it's, I would say probably the Northeast Neighborhood will be our target area. That will be also the most difficult, because we've got the most transient populations there, and we're gonna have to count on owners and managers.
So if we come across someone that might be interested in something like this, do we put them in contact with you?
Absolutely.
Jerry? Cool. So, Marc, the funds are being made available by whom?
We're gonna ask for the fund, so.
From whom?
Council. So we'll ask for those in the 2014 budget.
So this is city. So this is city money we're talking about to make money available for a grant?
Correct.
Okay. So now, we did have a Neighborhood Association list, is it current now?
Again, it's as current as the associations deem it to be.
So, but is it current, if you picked up that list, I mean, you're expecting people to keep the list up to date by calling you, which would be nice if that did happen?
Yes, and so, again, that, with the grant component of it, that kind of gives us a little bit of pull, you know, if you're going to come to us and ask us for money and participate in the program, have neighborhood identification signs, whatever it might be, you need to make sure you have a current list, and that, you know, someone who's dropped off and is no longer participating or interested, you know, you need to make sure that they're...
So the list you have now, that goes back a ways, how current do you think it is? I guess what I'm getting at, Mark, is, is in the past, if that list, as I recall, has always been difficult to keep accurate for lots of reasons.
Right.
What are we going to do different to make it better this time?
Well, because now there's not, there's, we don't have anything that says you have to have an HOA, or there's really no benefit that the city is providing to you by having an HOA. There's, there are benefits to having an HOA, but we're not, as the city, providing any of those. So by providing this program and the grants and the neighborhood identification signs and stuff like that, we're saying to the, whether it's an HOA that's formally organized or a neighborhood group that's up and coming, we're saying, you know, if you want to participate, one of the key factors is having all the current information.
So what's going to be different again?
If you want a grant, you've got to give us current information, so we're using a carrot technique.
So like Aberdeen Village, we'll be able to go out and get some money then?
It's sweat equity.
You can apply. So then, now, what is the total cost of this program to operate?
Well, as I've explained it tonight, is... The total cost would be about a hundred and seventy-one thousand. Now, some of that is already in the budget, and we're already utilizing, so that the total cost, and we're talking my time and all the other things that I do as well, but the total cost is, I have is a hundred and seventy-one thousand.
That includes the fifty K?
Yes.
But I think as far as new money, wasn't it about ninety-six?
New money, additional money is ninety-four or five.
Which, as Mark mentioned, will come in the 2014 budget discussion.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Peggy. So clarify for me again how this might interface with Neighborhood Watch groups.
It doesn't necessarily interface with Neighborhood Watch groups, and that will probably be a component that we'll utilize and pull into this, because, again, they're not quite as far, I don't think, as a, as a formalized HOA, but they're already organized to some extent. And so they may just have to do some additional steps that they haven't already done to participate in this program.
Okay, because, I mean, in terms of the grants, one of the things can be for National Night Out and block parties. And of course, the Neighborhood Watch groups have, most of them, I think, have the National Night Out parties.
Right.
And some of the Neighborhood Watch groups are doing additional things, even though they don't have to be.
Right.
So when I talked about my neighborhood, that's the group that we have. And we're fairly cohesive, except for the few new people who've recently moved in for various reasons. So I'm just trying to wrap my head, it would seem to me you'd want to just pull that in and build on it, and then, because that, the Neighborhood Watch part of it is really a key piece to the safety and welfare of the community.
Right.
I think that's...
Thank you.
Excuse me. The fact that we're doing National Night Out this year, I think, is a great way to get the word out on this program, too, to kind of keep that momentum going throughout the year. So it's going to, I think that part's going to dovetail really well, as far as how we market this program.
Mark, a couple of things. I kind of hear what Peggy's saying regarding the Neighborhood Watch groups, because as a, I helped organize my neighborhood for that, and it, I think that creating some ease, easy way to ease the two together, as opposed to having two groups, because I know with my group, if, if we've got to have three representatives doing this, and then we have the Neighborhood Watch thing over here, and that's really only, there's only one event a year there, occasionally the police will send you an email that says, watch out, this is kind of stuff that's going on in your neighborhood, and then you can email out to your folks, I haven't had one of those in a long time, but I think there should be some way, especially if you have, people have pretty...
And it may just be semantics, I mean, we're calling them one thing and another, when it may just be the same thing.
If they converge.
It's just called something else, and it's been called something else, so...
That's great.
That's something that we'll look at.
Yeah, I just think, we don't want to have them doubled up, and I think if you've got active Neighborhood Watch groups, you've got, there's your low-hanging fruit, right there. The other thought that I had was, I don't, have we planned any community outreach stuff this summer like we did last summer?
Haven't yet, but it's on the list.
Okay, because this might be a great, the great message, because last message was really the Inspire Littleton, and this may be the great, a good message to go around this year with it. I love it, I love it. I think it's a great start, I think that you guys have put some great thought into it, I really appreciate the research you've done, visiting Longmont, talking to other cities. I think this is, you know, you look at Longmont, and you go, God, I wish we had, it's twelve years old, they've been doing it for a long time.
Yeah, and again, you know, this may not be what Longmont's is, it might not be what Riverside, California, or Golden, but I think we can find something that should work for Littleton, and it may be, you know, a combination of all of those or a mix somewhere there.
Well, it should be what Littleton needs, and not what the others, what the others need. They need what they need, and we need what we need, but I think getting, that's how you learn, that's how you find out what's out there and what you can do, and then you tailor it to what we, what we need. I think you've done a great job. I, I think it's, I think you've got some good motivation for people to form the groups, and I think it's a nice, good first step, it's not too big a step or too small a step. Any other questions, council? Okay. Do you, do you guys need anything else from us?
Nope, that's great.
Okay. Okay, so...
I'm going to take about two minutes, and Kay is waiting.
Okay, we'll take a couple of minutes, clean up our dinner, get the program started up. Okay.
This is Sue Chandler. She's the president of the GLYI. And she formerly served on the LPS School Board for eight years, is that right? I have completed eight years in November, this November, so yeah. So Sue is going to be talking a little bit tonight, and then our guests are coming in, and they'll speak when she's ready. Okay, hello?
Hi Sue.
So first off, I know you guys all know about the GLYI, and I know you guys are
all the support helped start this program, and I wanted to just thank you again for your continued support, because it helps make our community strong. Kay and I discussed throughout the year that we wanted to give you guys an update on some of the changes we've been making, and the ways that we're trying to improve and strengthen the committee. So this year, we focused on forming an executive committee, which consists of five new board members. And the goal of forming that was to have more accountability and more strength of continuity of folks that are going to be continuing on and are committed to being with the program, and helping us form a larger board. And what we've seen is, right after Columbine, all the community partners that came together, there was continuity in governance at that time. And through the years, as you know, people come and go and all that, and it had remained constant for a long time. But after 12 years now, or whatever, 13, whatever we're at, we've had still the continued involvement of the partners, but we wanted to bring more continuity in terms of the governance of who is there from each group and organization of representatives from the community, and having fully identified board members, and move more into the age of accountability and commitment of having people be assigned versus just showing up. And so, that was the role, right now, that we took on of this five-member executive committee, is we are working to continue to build relationships and identify who are those key partners now in the community, who might be new partners that want to join in, and also do a needs assessment. Kay started that last year with even some survey information. We're looking at having the school district look into what are their needs, that they can identify, that they anticipate even growing into the future. So we'll be working on that next year, but also the recruitment and relationship building of these organizations. Along with that, the five-member board has met a number of times, four or five times now, to identify, kind of, what are key goals, what are focuses, above and beyond possibly what was identified a long time ago. And, I don't know how many of you saw this or remember this old brochure, but a lot remains the same in here, in terms of the very first brochure that was made for GLYI. And when I look at the key partners, it has the Littleton Public Schools, the City of Littleton, Arapahoe County Sheriff's, State of Colorado, Arapahoe Douglas Mental Health, Littleton Hospital, South Metro Chamber, South Metro Parks and Rec, the Benning Family Foundation, and then it lists just local businesses, neighborhoods, and other folks. So when I look at that, we still have a lot of those key partners, and even have added some, and many of them are still showing up regularly to meetings, or sending an identified person in their place if they can't come. But in moving forward, we decided we also wanted to spend some time looking over our data, to make sure the data is relevant, and that the use of your money is the best bang for its buck, that we're getting, and identify possibly future key partners. And that's one change, is we know you guys are constantly looking at your budgets, even though we are able to do a lot with what you guys give us, we know the needs in the community are just going to continue to increase. And so, as things get tighter and tighter also, we know that there's a possibility to go after grant money or get other key partners. So that's a goal of ours, is to get other key partners. We still are very much in need and hope to continue to get funding from you guys, but we'd like to add to that, if possible, and even grow some of the things. So with that, we decided to reach out and hire some experts, to do some background information in terms of what's going on around our research and our data, around the programs, what the needs are, and what are some key things that maybe we could be doing better to be even more efficient, and programs that we should maybe be looking at. So Kay, do you want to go on in, and should we talk about that right now?
We could just quickly go over the list, and then turn it over to Jim.
So the recruiting, back to the recruiting and advisory board. We still have come up with a list of how many folks now are on that list.
Presently, about 75 people. The GLYI group as a whole, I mean, there's about 100 people total, and we usually get about 25 people, or 20 to 25, who show up at a meeting when we have a meeting.
And, but so, first off, I should introduce our executive committee. We have myself, we have Rick, who is here, I think he was the only one that came up, but Rick Dershowitz, he's, what's your title at Mission Hills?
One of the pastors, connection pastor.
Okay.
Shannon's here.
Oh, Shannon's, oh, back there, back. Shannon is with the YMCA, of, which one is it, is it just the one here, or are you connected to the, okay. Then if you guys want to stand up, maybe, so they can see you better, everybody? And then we have Lori Elliott, who's with the Arapahoe Douglas Mental Health, and Sean O'Shea, who couldn't be with us this evening. So that's the five of us that have been meeting regularly. And with that, we've been coming up with, all of us have brought together lists of those people Kay just mentioned, that will be on this larger governance board. And John Brackney was the co-chair with me. Because of his duties at the chamber, he did not have the time to commit to this larger executive committee, but he will remain a committed partner on the larger board, and is continually helping us out with providing meeting space. And his goal is, he's identifying businesses to bring to us as well, as part of those community partners. Do you guys want to do questions at the end, or raise your hands and interrupt me if you have any, or how would you like to handle the questions?
Why don't we wait till the end?
Okay, that sounds good to me. So our goal with this advisory board, as we've come up with the list now, and then as soon as we have some more of this data from the philanthropy experts and the implementation group, we're going to be looking over that information, and then coming up with this whole packet of training, and doing a rollout with this larger board, and bringing them together. And some of it, most of it, will be some new partners, and so we'll be doing some more training. But most of it, they understand about GLYI, they maybe haven't been to a meeting themselves, but they have already bought into the concepts and the ideas of having this community collaboration. So with the philanthropy, I always have a hard time with that word, the consultants that we hired for that, they're doing, they're looking at our organizational structure, they're looking at the programs that we offer, they're looking at what's out there in terms of possible connections for key funders and businesses, and they're in the process of conducting their research and doing their evaluation of us right now. We've met with them a couple times, and provided them with data in terms of our bylaws and our past structure, and so they're looking over that, and we should be getting a report in the next couple weeks from them on that, as we move forward. The key part for that on me is helping us do some strategic planning, and then coming up with our funding ideas, to help us go after potential grant funders and things like that. So I'm really excited about that next phase. Sorry to break my pen. Then the other group that we hired is called the implementation group, and they're the ones that are doing a lot of the real data around our programs, our blueprint programs, and as you see on your agenda, the collection and analyzing of data, and looking into the programs, and the effect that those programs have on communities. The researched input around specifically related to our community, but then as it relates to what else is out there nationally. And they're here to speak with us tonight, because they're the experts. So with that, we have Dr. Jennifer Schroeder, and she is a consultant and an evaluator focusing on evidence-based practices, implementation science, systems evaluation, and the integration of health, mental health, education, criminal justice systems, and improving outcomes for individuals and communities. Dr. Schroeder is vice president of the Global Implementation Initiative, a nonprofit organization promoting the advancement of implementation science practice and policy in human services. And then with her is Dr. Lane Hulby, and she is also a consultant with expertise in research training, appraisals, and application for health professionals, community-based organizations, public policymakers, and parents. Her work promotes the effective implementation of evidence-based programs and policies for children, families, and communities using the framework of implementation science. And so, they're here today, and they have a number of things, and we've asked them, not only to do the research for us, but to try to look at what have we done, and analyzing how it relates to our community, and they're going to explain more of that with you right now.
Hey Sue, real quick, while it's coming around, just, you guys have always been very strong in terms of data and quantification of the program effectiveness. Is this attribute of the analytics trying now to go further beyond just the programs, and who's being served, and how they're being served?
I think it's a combination of all the above, but I know she's going to speak to that.
Okay, okay.
Sorry, I was side-parring a little bit, so in terms of, if you want to jump back in at any point with questions, that would be totally fine by me, when we get to some of the facts about, you know.
Yeah, and Bruce, if it doesn't get answered right after that, we can jump in, and I'll answer that more fully afterwards.
No problem.
So some of this is, good evening, by the way, hello. Thank you for having us. What we wanted to do is give you a little bit of an overview of, in general, the research on this prevention to community outcomes research base, essentially, and what the cost benefits look like. So, implementation science and community prevention, essentially a return on investment. This is what we started to work with the GLYI on, in terms of mapping that out for Littleton. And let me just first say, it's exciting to be able to come and work with Kay and the GLYI, because there are some communities, I'm not just saying this to kind of be nice or generous, but there are some communities who really are taking a comprehensive look at what types of services, prevention and intervention services, you would provide to a community to be more comprehensive. Littleton's one of them. So we also work with Boulder, their Boulder Impact Initiative, if you've heard of that. They do four evidence-based programs, and really getting a handle on how do you put all of those programs into a service array that is seamless and synergistic and works together. That's the goal for a healthy community. Right here, someone just touched the computer. So just something to think about, Grand Canyon hiking advice, don't mistake a clear view for a short distance. This is what we think about in prevention science, is prevention is about the long term. I think it's pretty clear in prevention research that really investing in some early programs, as well as some intervention programs along the lifespan, make a huge difference. It's a clear view, I think, at this point, research-wise, but it's not necessarily a short distance. Some of the key questions that often come up are, how does a prevention approach help us achieve the community vision? Can we prove that it works? We're talking about a long-term commitment, can we prove it? How do we know we won't just be wasting money? And I'm just being very colloquial here. What is the cost of not doing this? Burning questions that we get a lot in communities, and just other burning questions I would just encourage you to think about, and please, again, throw them out as we have them. I'm kind of a fluid presenter in that way, I don't mind having a discussion at any point. Because I think we don't have a ton of time, I built in some discussion right now, but I think maybe if we just kind of move forward to stay on track, and then we can come back to this, but in your own words, if you could think about, what is your vision for the greater Littleton community, and all this, you know, we are coming from outside the community, so you may be having these conversations, obviously, on an ongoing basis, but in the end, for some of the Q and A, really tying your vision in your own words, what that looks like, and how we translate that back to services. What you have in front of you is a handout, this is a very sort of initial draft of a timeline for what prevention might do. We have healthy, productive citizens might be your vision for your community. I am just throwing these out, these are my words, not necessarily your words, healthy, productive citizens, healthy economy, cost savings in the community. Now what does that mean? Well, when we back it up to long-term community outcomes in prevention research, that means reduce crime. Crime is not only painful to its citizens, but it's costly. Reduce substance abuse, reduce child abuse and neglect and domestic violence, increase educational attainment, which sparks a whole number of positive outcomes, increased employment and health and mental health. All of these things work to reduce costs and improve the overall health of citizens. The three programs that you've had running, the evidence-based programs, Nurse Family Partnership, Incredible Years, Functional Family Therapy, all actually get at one of these outcomes in some way. Now here's the kicker about evidence-based programs. I'm sure you've had this conversation for quite a long time, you're well-versed in EBP's. EBP's, just as a refresher, for those who maybe haven't talked about this recently, are these programs that were developed and demonstrated in what's called randomized control trials, very rigorous settings, highly monitored, lots of oversight, usually academic institutions that say, if done very well, they will work. And they work by reducing crime, reducing substance abuse, all of those types of things. Then you take them to a community setting, and really the job of dissemination is to replicate the program as intended. And so that's really the job of like, folks like GLYI and Littleton, doing these programs, they've been demonstrated to work, that's what we know is proven. What's not necessarily guaranteed without a, quite a bit of support and sustainability and commitment behind it, is the replication. So you don't have to prove that the program works anymore. That's been proven, actually, in painstaking detail over 30, 40 years. You just have to replicate it well, as intended. When you back that up, really the quality implementation, sustainability, that's your short-term outcome, that's sort of where we live, and that's what we do with the implementation group, is just to really help identify a plan that replicates well and is sustainable. So the Incredible Years, just to kind of tease out some of those more specific outcomes, there's child and parent outcomes out of the Incredible Years. You've got reductions in conduct, negative behavior, improvements in social skills, but on the parent's side, you also have increased parent involvement, appropriate discipline, decrease of harsh and inconsistent discipline. Now some of the other things that these types of outcomes show us in the long term, are that when you have increased parent involvement with teachers in classrooms, you also have increased involvement with whatever system that child finds themselves in. So it's not just one direct outcome, you're in a continuum of what the prevention timeline looks like. With Nurse Family Partnership, again, child and parent outcomes. Child outcomes, lower preterm birth rate, all kinds of stuff, higher immunization, breastfeeding, higher rates of reaching developmental milestones. And then at a 15-year follow-up, this is all that academic research that took decades, reduced child abuse and neglect, and reduced arrests of the 15-year-old who was an infant in Nurse Family Partnership. Parent outcomes, reduced cigarette smoking and pregnancy, which the research shows sets you up for all kinds of positive health benefits in the long term. Reduced family domestic violence, increased employment, marriage, diploma, you're making a more productive citizen out of the mother. And that reduces costs, and that's another trajectory for the prevention work. Functional Family Therapy, reduced substance abuse, delinquency, behavior problems, and this is more on the, you know, adolescent side of the continuum. The parent and family, increased parent functioning, increased communication, supervision and parenting skills, which helps monitor obstinate or bad behavior, juvenile delinquent behavior, but it also increases communication with other systems that the child is involved with. Their pediatrician, the school, all of that parent involvement, it's sort of leveraging those networks. So you're setting up a more positive trajectory. So the cost benefit, the thing about these programs is that they do cost more than treatment as usual to implement, especially in the beginning, but they produce better outcomes, and in the long term, they save you so much money, it's crazy. And I always end up sounding like a salesman at this point, but, you know, we got into this work partly because it's just, it's very compelling how, if you can have that long-term vision that you're talking about, essentially what happens is, for every $1 you spend for functional family therapy, you save nearly $12. And what they're taking into consideration with studies like this, cost analysis studies, is the cost of crime, the cost of truancy, the cost of health issues, like if youth get into substance abuse problems, and then the cost that their parents also exhibit. For every $1 you spend on the Incredible Year, $7.50.
I think it would be helpful if you could tell us how each of these programs work, because you started out telling us what the outcome is.
Yes.
For instance, in functional family therapy, do you take adolescents and their parents and throw them into a room with a lot of loud music, and let them beat up on each other, or how does that work?
Absolutely, that's totally, yeah. Yeah. No, thank you, that's a very good question, I sort of sped right past that. So functional family therapy is an individual family therapy session, in which the adolescent and the parents work on communication skills, but they also identify what their presenting problems are at that time, and how that relates to, say, problems at school, or problems with arrests, problem behavior in the community. It's a very intensive family, yeah.
And they do this with whom?
With adolescents and their parents.
Is there another part you don't know?
No, not usually.
You just take an adolescent, their parent, put them together, and say, talk it out?
Oh, I'm sorry, no, the therapist, I'm sorry. Yeah, you're a really good interviewer, actually, you're like, you're not telling me the whole truth here, yeah. Yes.
I think to keep order, we need to confine the questions to the council. Jim, if you've got some additional questions, we can follow up with those after.
Oh, well, she said, go ahead and ask questions, whenever you want.
Typically, the council, the formal of the meeting is the council does that.
Okay, I apologize to you.
That's okay, keep going.
We can chat, yeah.
He knows the answers to the questions, he's just wanting you to tell all of us.
I figured as much, no, thank you, yeah. Okay, so let's keep moving. Just a quick example about, this is a program that you don't do, but I think it's one of the really compelling studies about how healthcare costs can be impacted. You've got a higher cost upfront for dialectical behavior therapy versus treatment as usual, but when they looked at things like emergency room visits and psychiatric inpatient, it was so much more costly for treatment as usual, and in the end, that was your savings. I think that when you look at these programs, just the money you invest has ramifications even beyond the initial outcome. So let's talk a little bit about implementation. That's the replication of the proven program. And just as a little exercise, if the council or anyone wants to, just shout out, it's not a discussion, just shout out what you want to do. Would you rather have for your family Program A or Program B? Now this is an example of a behavior and bullying problems in school. This is the number of discipline referrals per 100 students. Would you rather have Program A or Program B?
B.
Program B, yeah. It's an easy test. Behavior and relationship problems, percent recidivism.
A.
Okay, yes, an A. These are the same program, and actually, I'm sorry, this was a small typo, but the one with the lower recidivism and the lower number of referrals is the one with the high fidelity, is the one with the implementation support behind it. They're the same program, PBIS and Functional Family Therapy. We've found on a number of occasions that the difference between having the appropriate amount of implementation support is like everything. If you don't have that, you might as well not be doing the program, and that's part of what GLYI is trying to do, is the appropriate implementation support. Oftentimes, you may have heard of the alphabet soup of programs. What happens is a program gets into a system of any kind, the appropriate implementation isn't there, fidelity suffers, and then at the end of 12 or 24 months, they say, we didn't see any outcomes, it must be the program, let's try a new program. What happens is you keep program cycling, but really, the key is appropriate amount of support in the beginning, and to sort of shepherd it through those years. This is a, this is a very confusing slide, but let me walk you through it. This is on functional family therapists, low versus high fidelity, and at first, that yellow line in the middle, the average recidivism for all treatment participants was the same as the control group. This made them initially say, oh shoot, what happened? I guess the program. I guess the program doesn't work. But when they looked at fidelity, higher fidelity was actually 13%, lower was 28%. We just, I point this out, and we see this time and time again. And when...
Dr. Schroeder?
Yes.
Could you just hit us again a little bit with, what does fidelity mean?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I absolutely can. Fidelity is essentially implementing the program as intended, so there's lots of measures we have to ensure that the program is being implemented, say, true to the curriculum, you're meeting the dosage that you should be, when you're talking with a family in Functional Family Therapy, you're meeting the content in the right sequence that's been proven to shown to be effective, and there's a lot of oversight to that. Like, almost, it's an incredible amount of oversight to make sure that the fidelity to the program model is being met. When it's not being met, you might as well be doing just treatment as usual. Without enough oversight, we find that implementers will sometimes say, well, you know, I've been doing this for a lot of years, I think I'm just going to do what I know, which, that doesn't say they're not experienced people to deliver the program, but they really need to be rigorous in order to ensure that the program is being met.
Versus the low?
Versus the low, yeah. Low fidelity would be mixing in things that aren't really the program components, treatment as usual. So, I mean, a bad example is sort of talk therapy. I mean, we could talk, and you might feel good that I'm, you know, engaging and listening and things like that. That's not necessarily an evidence-based program. That's us having a nice chat, but we could do that over coffee. It's not a program designed to specifically address targeted symptoms, set goals, aimed at the specific issues.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Can you explain why the recidivism rate would still be 13% in the higher fidelity?
Well, with this particular group, this is from Washington State, and, you know, they're looking at, they're getting folks who aren't low-risk, they're at least medium-risk, working with Functional Family Therapy. It would be a miracle to see 0%. And really, what the program is designed to do is to reduce the recidivism significantly more than if you were to do treatment as usual. And that's, I don't think I've ever seen a program, ever, that's eradicated things. I mean, many behaviors are multi-determined, but if you can target and reduce, you're making a big difference. So, what does this all tell us about our community vision? Again, prevention intervention research says that when these programs are demonstrated to produce these outcomes when implemented well, and what we often hear is, but wait, aren't these programs guaranteed to work? I've talked to a few folks who sort of likened it to a can of soup. They thought, we thought it was just a can of soup on the shelf, it was ready to go. We take it off the shelf, we pop it on the stove, voila. It's not that simple, in fact, because of the complex world that we live in. And there's something we refer to as the science-to-service gap, which is that the usability of a program or practice has little to do with the weight of the evidence regarding the program outcomes. Evidence on effectiveness tells us what to select, but the evidence on outcomes does not help us implement. And this is my metaphor for the world we live in. No matter what system you're in, whether it's education, juvenile justice, health, mental health, there is a lot of moving parts and a lot of people who with different experiences, training, perspectives, philosophy, who are implementing these programs nationwide and globally. Now, the interesting thing about, I love this diagram, because each of the blue dots is actually doing something repetitive. They're doing the same thing over and over, but there's so much there that if you were to put something new into that system, you would have to adjust somehow and take into account the blue dots, the slides, the zigzags, the, you know, this and that. I also love this cartoon, the guy has complicated equation on the left, complicated equation on the right, and in the middle of that, a miracle occurs, and his friend says, I think you should be a little more explicit here in step two. This is what we see as implementation not going well, is then a miracle occurs, right? We're just gonna, you know. So, implementation science is really where the second step in that messy world. What we know from the research on implementation is that it takes two to four years from the time that you start the process of identifying a program to where you get to full implementation. And what that means for us in the research world is that at least 50% of your implementers or your staff doing the program are meeting high-fidelity standards. So, that's getting at least half of those people consistently doing high fidelity. What that takes is organizational support, culture shift, you have to integrate a new program into what they're doing already, you have to monitor fidelity, you have to have data, there's a science behind it. When you do that well, it has huge outcomes, positive outcomes. We have also found that building the competency and confidence of staff, as well as changing organizations and systems, are your key. So, what you need is a group that can help support that and sustain it over time. Implementation teams, and I know I'm going a little fast, but I know you have a lot on your plate, so please tell me you slow down if you need to. Implementation teams are what we refer to as the group that is sort of the shepherds of the quality implementation. They serve as a connection between the community vision and service delivery. They ensure that policies support quality practice, and this is, I think, where you all are very important, is that we can't do any of this without good policy. What we usually refer to as PIP and PEP, it's Policy Informed, excuse me, Practice Informed Policy, Policy Enabled Practice. There needs to be a constant feedback loop so that policymakers know what's happening at the practice level, and if they need to adjust at all to either support organizationally, what implementers need, or some other system communication policy. It's really best done when you're in partnership with sort of a public-private entity so that you can speak across those multiple systems. See how each program contributes to the big picture. This is a couple of studies where Fixon et al., who does a ton of research on implementation science, they found that it took about three years when, that's a two to four estimated time to full implementation, when there was a specific implementation focus, 80% of the studies or the groups were on track. When there was no implementation focus, only 14% got on track, and on average, it took about 17 years for the program to become fully integrated. Some people say, why would anything sort of languish for 17 years? But, treatment as usual, if you've got something that we're used to, we've always had it, why would we change this? Our staff know it. That's kind of how 17 years happens. And this is how we think about active implementation support. You've got multiple levels, practitioner, organization, systemic care, and then, the state, county, and local context, and all of them sort of need to be connected. One example of things like what you're doing here in Littleton is Pennsylvania, we are connected to a few, you know, groups nationally and globally like this, but Pennsylvania, about, I would say, 15 years ago, had a very innovative governor, I would say. This is how the Director of the Epicenter describes it. They decided that the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency was going to adopt all of the Blueprints models, just complete hook, line, and sinker. What they did, though, was they went to work partnering with local funders and Penn State, they invested in the menu, and then, they also did quite a lot of community readiness work, which is a lot of the work that you all are doing. What do we need? What are we doing now? How would we integrate it? And what do we need to do to sustain it over time? And they are essentially, I mean, at least US-speaking, domestic-wise, one of the most comprehensive disseminators of EBP's, and doing it with very high fidelity. But, they have had a public-private partnership for this entire time and found a way to keep those partners at the table throughout different governors and throughout different legislative sessions, and they had a few close calls, they said, where people were almost going to shake it up, but it hasn't happened yet. But, the Director of this is one of the folks that we brought out to Colorado last fall to speak for our Colorado Collaborative on Implementation, and he does quite a bit of speaking globally. So, the GLYI, I mean, you know, it sort of piqued our interest because the public-private partnership that happens at the community level is really where it happens, the policymaker involvement, as I said, and we need to focus on doing it well. So, what we're doing, you know, with the GLYI is really, you know, talking about what data exists. One of the other things that Lain and I do, we're actually the evaluators for all of the Incredible Years in the state, so we know the data pretty well in terms of what's happening outcome-wise and what's happening implementation-wise. And then, Nurse-Family Partnership, that we're not involved in, or Functional Family Therapy, but sort of know those folks, thinking about what you want to have happen in the long term for your community, what's your community vision, and then backing it up to the services that would impact those outcomes. And then, also, having the tools to kind of articulate this well, both in a public and private context, so that everyone can kind of see that vision, because it is a long-term commitment, and it's sort of hard to keep that vision in your mind's eye or alive for long, I mean, you really have to keep revisiting it and seeing how this all connects over the lifespan. So, another good quote, "Even if you're on the right track, you will still get run over if you don't keep moving." Just a Will Rogers quote to kind of leave you with, so.
I got through that fast, actually.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Schroeder. It's going to be a question, probably for some of the folks in the room as well. As I understand our Greater Littleton Youth Initiative, it's actually public-public-public partnership. I'm not sure there's a whole lot of private dollars that are coming into it, and so, there's really not, other than a collaborative goodwill in the community, there isn't any control of the group. Folks are just doing the right things because we've kind of collectively gotten to a belief that evidence-based systems and programs are what can work for the long haul in the community. Can you talk about that challenge? Because there's not a, you know, there's not a governor saying you will take the programs and take them hook, line, and sinker.
I, well, I think maybe you might want to speak to this too, but I think locally, you have quite a lot of influence. You know, we work with Boulder County as well, and theirs is mostly a public partnership, I would say. They have a number of partners. And I think that they have leveraged that sort of local control identity that I think exists in Colorado to really, you know, leverage what happens in their community. There is, I think, a lot of buy-in at the state level, although it's an interesting It's getting there. We often talk with folks who are at the state level and also the other group that we're with, the Global Implementation Initiative, at the national level, and sometimes, it's sort of like building the will within and not necessarily a policy that trickles down to everyone, but I think it's getting there. But Kay, I don't want to speak for GLYI in terms of...
I think that a lot of the other...
Kay, you'll need to get to a mic, please. Thanks.
It's a good question, Phil, and I think that the in-kind of our other partners is fairly large, and that's the best way we can describe it, although we do want to have more funding from more partners in the future. That's definitely our goal. So, I think, and to add more businesses and to add more organizations, I think we think of it as something that will become that.
Bruce?
One of the evolving requirements is that hospitals, as part of their community involvement in healthcare, have to have an evidence-based program, and they have a lot of requirements now under the Act. Are you familiar with any hospitals taking on any of these programs as part of their requirements to meet that?
Hospitals don't often go into sort of the behavioral health, education side of things, although they're evidence-based programs, you're absolutely right. They're more on the side of like health intervention delivery. But, there is a center at UC Denver called CRISP, which is Center for Research and Implementation, Science Prevention. They are solely focused on health interventions that are evidence-based and the implementation around it, and we informally partner with them to kind of, you know, cross the Ts and dot the Is across these systems. I think that's the future that we're working towards, is more of a partnership between health and behavioral health and education, but they typically don't adopt the same programs because of different outcomes. Yeah.
Thank you.
Bruce?
Your conversation about, or your discussion about fidelity is, I think it's an interesting dimension that I didn't fully grasp. I would, based on the folks involved and the work that's been done over the years, I would tend to assume, or would assume, that GLYI has a high degree of fidelity with respect to the implementation. I guess my question would be, are you guys seeing that? Is there, are there, and additionally, are there things that we should consider doing that would improve fidelity, assuming it's not either high, it's not binary, it's not high or low, it's somewhere on a scale?
Absolutely, and that's a really good question. I think one of those other layers that I didn't quite get to is what these programs have in place also are what we call purveyors of, and they're Invest in Kids. FFT has its own National Center that provides a lot of oversight. NFP was created here in Colorado and has the Colorado Center here too, and the National Center. But what they do is, they have the day-to-day oversight of the purveyor, of the, excuse me, the staff who implement. The thing that GLYI brings is the organizational and community context, so that you can't really, like a purveyor, like Invest in Kids or FFT National Center, they can't jump into a community and have all the parts in place and ensure that there's sustainability there. And also, what those purveyors do is work with the community, which GLYI is a conduit of, to ensure that there's in-house capacity for future training, for coaching, so having a peer coach that's in-house at the site, like the Village, that does the Incredible Years, training folks to have people who've been doing it for a while, have the skillset, and then move into that supervisory role and that coach role. And so, that sort of, you need someone to kind of help shepherd that process and ensure it aligns with the vision. So, yeah, exactly. That's the added layer to it, is sort of the program people start that out and share the responsibility with local groups. Yeah.
And I think that's a key point. What we're talking about is that the school district has been the main focus because they're the ones that identify the kids. But what we're seeing in the schools, and why I'm agreeing to stay on even past being a school board member and leading more into a main role of GLYI, is the needs are increasing. And what we're seeing with these blueprint programs that we've continued, you notice we've eliminated a number of them because we were finding they weren't doing what we thought, but it was the GLYI oversight mainly that said, you know what, we think this isn't working the way we want it to, and the community partners have identified that it wasn't working the way we wanted to. But, in the schools, all these programs, these three that we kept, they're touching more than just the kids in the schools, they're touching the parents, which then plays out for future kids. It touches the brothers and sisters which maybe have moved on out of school. In many cases, you guys know the SARB Board, that is a rollout of this community partnership, and the idea came out of GLYI, Students Attendance Review Board, which is SARB. And in many places, some of those students that are referred to SARB because they're at risk for dropping out, they are then referred to Functional Family Therapy as part of this program, and that is touching the entire family. And in some cases, those kiddos have already, have guardians been appointed that are only 21-years-old, their parents are in jail, or they've died, or they're off in divorce, you know, who knows what all's going on. But, so, we have a 21-year-old showing up as the student guardian, or a 24-year-old, whatever the case may be, but then, we refer them to this Functional Family Therapy, and we're saving two lives, in essence. And with the Incredible Years, that's, you know, preschool, once again, that's not fully in the K-12 system, and we're touching more lives, and we're getting trained to, not only those students to work with their neighbors and friends, but the family and the parents. So, I look at these programs as, it's not just something the school system can do, it's not something we should just only fund for the school, but it is funding for our community, and we are reducing the cost later on, and I think the research shows that. And we have enough buy-in, as we've been surveying the community partners, that they want to see this continue. want to see this continue. And it evolved, as we said, out of Columbine to try to prevent violence, but we know the needs have increased for so much more than just violence prevention. There was a quote out of the Department of Substance Abuse and Mental Health, the national organization, and they quoted, they've been quoted as saying, "When it comes to protecting students from violence, it is not enough to focus only on security measures such as hiring security guards, locking doors, or developing emergency plans. What's needed is involvement by the whole community, school personnel, law enforcement, the mental health systems, community-based organizations, families, and even the young people themselves." That is where the GLYI would like to grow stronger and continue to do what we've been doing. Share the rest of the list, are you think we're done? Rest of this? Of this? So with moving down the agenda, one of the things we've also hit on as a goal is, we would like to partner more with your response to Intervention Network that has come out of the City of Littleton. We see that as a great partnership. We deal with similar issues. We feel we could join forces and become a stronger unit.
That's the work in the northeast neighborhood.
Yeah, the northeast neighborhood.
A lot of the similar population and partners all doing the same work, it makes sense to bring them together.
We're excited about trying to partner with that group. And once again, it's touching more of the similar at-risk communities. And we did remove Life Skills, as you know, we found we weren't able to implement it. The school schedule was being too tight, the training of folks, it was getting more and more costly to do. And so we removed that. But our hope is that with some of this research, we're going to be looking into what are other ways that we can come up with different programs to meet the needs of what Life Skills was doing. And we've used those funds for so long, and that was a huge cost item that this group, once again, identified as, we have other needs possibly that could be better met with a program that could be implemented with more fidelity than that one. And the school district is doing that, Positive Behavior Risk Intervention Support, what is it called again? Positive Behavior Intervention Support System. And then the mapping where Blueprint programs go, I know we have that identified, Kay has the information here. And once again, I look at it as, what does Littleton want to provide in the community in terms of how strong of a community you want to be? I think you guys do a great job at managing Littleton and keeping it strong, and it's a place where families want to continue to go. We have a lot of open enrollment kids that come into our school and our community, but our schools reside within this community. And once again, we have, Keith here is a representative of Centennial City Council, and we're reaching out to work with him to give him some information and hopefully be presenting down the road to Centennial City Council as well, to try to gain them since half their schools are in Centennial as part of our growing plan.
You're not going to change the name, though, are you?
No.
Keith?
It's like, our school district is still Littleton Public Schools, so. But anyway, so are there any other questions? We're looking forward to the future. We see a lot of potential for not only meeting more community needs, but potential for funding. And it's, there's a lot of, one thing we're not able to do is go after grants right now. And some of this new structure that we're looking to possibly do in the future will allow us to go after grant money.
Jim?
Well, I served for a number of years on the Board of Directors for the Arapahoe County Early Childhood Council. And they talked a lot about, they've got programs like the Incredible Years and things like that, that seemed to me like, because they dealt with preschool from birth practically up to four years of age. And there's so much that can happen with brain growth and so on like that during that period of time, that tying them in with GLYI might be...
We do work with them.
Very good.
They helped us implement the Incredible Years at Arapahoe Community College.
Brooke Gretchen-Davidson?
Yes.
Yeah, right. Okay. And Debbie Reed?
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Bruce?
Well, and sort of to piggyback on Jim's point, I think I saw, the science on this stuff keeps changing constantly as more researchers, and I think I saw an article that I don't remember if it was in The Post or a different paper about the nutritional aspects of moms who are pregnant, and what the longer-term implications are for good versus marginal nutritional intake. You know, so those kinds of things with respect to the Nurse Family Partnership Program would seem to be maybe another dimension that, it wasn't up on the board, and I wasn't going to say anything about it until you sort of mentioned some of these other attributes of the science. But it just, it's sort of fascinating how continuing to modify, once the program's in place, the opportunity to tweak it, to accommodate better, new information, better information that becomes available is, you know, a huge advantage versus having to assimilate all that from ground zero for, you know, a community who hasn't been doing this for 15 years.
And it just keeps getting proven the earlier we go.
Yeah.
It's all prevention and it's invisible.
Yeah.
It's almost invisible, but when the kid's 15, you're going to see it all.
The other piece that we know we haven't been as strong as, just because the need wasn't there necessarily, but more communication around what is Gray or Littleton Youth Initiative, what is the benefit in the community, and then also providing a place for volunteers. We have continually had people show up and want to volunteer to actually help with the youth program, but we haven't had that opportunity. But we see a future for trying to come up with volunteers, especially around the northeast neighborhood, doing school supplies, you know, backpacks, school supplies, doing food bank work, you know, donation items, possibly mentoring. I mean, there's tons of potential out there to better be able to address getting our community to also help our community. But without a constant Board of Directors that have more time to do that, and without coming up with maybe future funding to help train our folks how to do that, we have not been able to. So that's a goal in the future as well.
I would thank you so much, and thank you for coming from Broomfield. Thank you for that. You know, one of the things that's always, I think it's always great for community to talk about and think about doing these types of things, but what you guys are doing is you're really doing it. And what I am most, and Kay, I think it was about a year ago, you came and talked to us, and it really opened my eyes up to what I think makes GLYI different than a lot of these efforts across the country, because, you know, we're not unique. But what makes us very, very, what makes you very, very successful is that you're constantly looking at what you're doing, you're not resting on what you did, and you're not accepting that what you did last week is what you should do next week. And so you take a hard look at your stuff, and you are constantly tweaking it and changing it. This shows that you're not afraid to kill a program and work on something else, to set a higher goal that requires more work, more money, more effort, but it's a goal and that's where you're headed. And I think that's what keeps, that's what makes this program so successful, and that's why the reach-out that you do to the community, it's always on, what do you need today? Not, we're going to provide you something you probably needed last month because we're not really tracking well. But you are, and I think that that makes it easy to fund, that makes it easy to support, that makes it easy, and it's going to, when you guys get set up for grants, it's going to make it easy for grants, because it's, what you're doing is creating a program that will build on its own successes, and you guys will continue to tweak it. The group you have here is stellar, and these people are, the time that they put into it, the commitment, the diversity of backgrounds and stuff that you've got is really fantastic, and it shows. So, you know, again, I don't think we have any complaints, we're just very proud that it's part of our community, and we're proud to definitely be able to support it. And I think, I think you're right about sharing the good news a little bit more, and I know that, and I don't know where the status of it is, but we had met with a number of the groups for breakfast about a year ago, Kay, I think you were there. And we talked about how do we combine, how do we create a resource for volunteers and for this type of activities? They're all over the city, Doctors Care, Immigrant Initiative, to create a place where the community can go one place and say, oh, they need people here, they need people there. And so I know that with all of our website enhancements and stuff, that's definitely something we're still...
Yeah, we really want to look at that, we're very excited about that.
Yeah, it'll be a great asset, so. Okay, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll take a five-minute break. Hit it.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's that time of the year again where we look at the building codes, and I'm sure you've probably seen them. It's a stack that's probably three feet high. So I asked Jim to kind of, let's boil it down to what potentially could cause issues, and give you a presentation on that before you actually see the ordinance, before you... Turn it over to Mr. Thielen.
Good evening, Council. Glenn's right.
Dr. Thielen?
Was it Dr.? Every three years, we look at building codes, and tonight, I want to address just five different items that I think are in need of discussion. When we talk about the building codes, there are three items that, you know, that I'm addressing. One of them is energy conservation, and if you read that, that information is for your purpose only. I'm not recommending any changes to that, it's just giving you another look at how the energy code keeps on progressing and progressing towards the ultimate goal of having houses and buildings so energy-efficient that they're off the grid, meaning that they would have an alternate energy supply source. That is DOE's ultimate goal. This time, what they're doing with the energy code, looking at air leakage, how much air is coming into a building, and they're doing it with a test called the blower door test, where they seal off the building completely, and then they pump air in there and just look for where the air is going outside. What's happening also, I mean, you can look at the penetrations and they can seal it, but we also have to look at, are we creating sick buildings? So what we're looking at also, not only to this, but because we're only allowed three air changes, we're looking at how do we replenish some of that air that we're not letting out or letting in? And there are different methods to do it that I really won't get into because I'm taking up more than my five minutes that I'm allowed.
Can we ask?
So, that's energy.
Just a quick question, it says that we're selected to be part of a pilot program...
that we're not letting out or letting in? And there are, there are different methods to do it that I, that I really won't get into because I'm taking up more than my five minutes that I'm allowed. So, that's energy.
Just a quick question. It says that we're, we're selected to be part of a pilot program, receiving additional education. Who's that getting the education?
My building inspectors and me and the plan reviewer. This is just phenomenal. We have an expert nationally known here in Colorado who came and went, not only went over the building codes and the new requirements, but also we went out in the field and, and kind of showed, these are the things that you want to look at. This gave us such a head start on the energy code, learning all the new requirements and things like that. It was just, it was a great, great thing. And it's still going on. We're looking at commercial projects and residential projects.
Bruce.
Jim, a question. I just want to make sure I understand. This is all related, this is all related to new construction. How much of it, is it all related to new? That was sort of like an assumptive phrase, but is it, how much of it applies to renovations?
Well, we can look at, the energy conservation code doesn't deal strictly with new commercial, new residential.
So?
If you're putting an addition on your house, if you're remodeling your house, if you're doing.
Pop top.
Then there, then we're talking about, you have to meet the current code.
But does that, would that include this if this were adopted?
It wouldn't include, you know, like the blower door test. You can't test the whole house.
Okay.
If you're only putting on.
Or like sprinklers. I mean, if I, if you do a pop top, you don't have to put sprinklers in?
No, you don't have to do that. You're only looking at, for sprinklers, the only thing we're talking about is new construction. We're not talking about any renovations, anything like that.
Okay, and there's frankly, so that then would be either, I don't know, something like, like a marathon where you've got new homes going in, or if somebody scraped a house and put a new house up, that would apply. But if it's just even, you know, at what level does somebody do a pop back and get rid of the, you know, just keeps the front facade and?
I mean, i- if you're looking for a percentage.
Well, I don't know. Is that how it would work?
No.
It's either.
The only time that, the energy code only applies to what you're doing new. And typically, what we're talking about insulation in the exterior walls, insulation in the roof structure.
Right.
We're looking at energy efficient windows. We're, all the doors have to be insulated now.
Yes, but that's pretty, that's nothing that exotic relative to, I don't know, this, the energy, this one seemed to be a bit more exotic than.
I wasn't very clear. I should have said new construction.
No, that's okay. I just was, I was sort of, that's, I think what it said, but I just wanted to make sure I understood where the, it seemed like there might be a gray line there somewhere. Okay, thanks.
Jared.
Whenever you mention something like, mention something like the Department of Energy out of Washington DC talking about efficiencies, I think Washington DC is not efficient at all. So I'm always worried when I hear DOE wants to tell us how to do something here in Colorado. With that in mind, when you do solar inspections on solar installations, why do you go in the house to make sure they have a carbon monoxide detector?
The building code states that when a permit is issued for the, for anything in the interior of a building, whether it be a water heater, whether it be, you know, a kitchen remodel, whatever, because carbon monoxide alarms and smoke detectors are so important to the safety of the occupants, the code requires that they be installed if they're not already installed.
So, but solar panels on top of a roof?
You might, if we have to go into the house, maybe to look at the electrical panel, if there's a reason for us to go in, then we require that they put those in. If we're, you know, if we're doing a roofing inspection, or a siding inspection, or something like that, then no, that requirement doesn't apply.
Because when we had panels done at our house, and I'm one example only, is that it was all on the outside, panels on the outside, but you guys had to come back because there was nobody home to go into the house. You guys could go see that we had a little carbon monoxide.
The only reason.
It made no sense whatsoever to me. Is that a DOE requirement or?
No, that is a building code requirement. It's also a state of Colorado requirement.
I was gonna, that's state legislation.
They got into that also. In your case, it probably shouldn't have been, if there was no reason for the building inspector to go into the house, then there is no reason why that would have been a requirement.
I guess what I'd like to see, if you're going, we're going to add some requirements, I'd like to see some requirements go away at the same time. It's kind of like if I buy a new shirt, my wife claims I have to get rid of an old shirt. I would like to see if we're going to have some changes, I would like to see what is being removed.
Let's remove.
Instead of that guy getting higher and higher, I would like to see it at least not go higher. You follow what I'm saying?
I do. It's, it's pretty complicated though, because there are, there are state and federal regulations that we have to abide by. And then there are local amendments that you can choose to do. However, they tend to be, the list is this long on the local exemptions, and it's this thick on the mandatory requirements. So I'm not sure that that's the approach of not adding additional regulation unnecessarily, I think is what we're recommending here tonight, or discussing here tonight. Building stuff, I'm not sure that there's anything we can remove that hasn't already been not added in the past, if you.
When possible, I'd like to see.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Jim.
Well, and there are, some contractors actually like the new codes because they do find different ways of solving certain building problems that get adopted in the new code, whereas Jim's hands are tied. If there's a better way of building a widget, whatever it is, he's got to stick to that old code. So even though we talk about new requirements, there are things that get solved that a lot of contractors are happy about. We don't generally hear about that, but they do get, get perfected over the code cycles.
One of the advantages, and I'm sure Jim talked about this years ago, when we went to the I codes over the UBC codes, and I'm not going to remember the terminology that I'm looking for right now, but they allow the flexibility of equivalencies in terms of accepting new material or new ways of doing it, where the U codes were very prescriptive. These are, have more subjectivity. I'm still not thinking of the word I'm looking for, but more flexibility allowed in them. That's more about building design and layout than it is your concern about, is there just more general regulation? But we certainly hear that. And I know Jim's not looking, nor any of us are looking for more to regulate.
I think the important thing to realize about the building codes is, one, their minimum requirements. It might not seem that way, but they are the minimum. When we see changes to the code, it's usually based on new technology or new methods of construction that will reduce the cost. When we're looking at the energy code, that might not be true. DOE has, you know, said to the parent organization in the International Code Council, you have to take our recommendations. If you don't take the recommendations, we're going to write our own code. So, you know, there's kind of a balance that we have to achieve. But most of the changes that are in the new codes today that you're going to be asked to adopt are technical or clarification. Maybe for easier, you know, putting things in the same location so it's not so hard to find. Clarifying, you know, a code requirement that might be confusing or obsolete. So we're, those are the things that the building codes. And I read each one of the building codes. I have to be familiar with what's going on. If I don't, and that, it takes me a long time to prepare the ordinance, get ready where that I feel comfortable, where that I can present something to you and know what I'm talking about, and realize that it is good for the city of Littleton. Okay? If you want to get rid of a requirement, let's talk about sprinkler systems. I want to tie, not, I want to talk about sprinkler systems, but I also want to tie it to the underside of I joists. And this is my prop. This is an I joist. These are manufactured from the byproducts of wood, glued together under pressure. These things can be tall, they can be short, all depends on how long of a span these have to go from one bearing point to another in order that the roof won't collapse. Because it's all pressurized, put together with pressure and glue, it's also very flammable. Structurally, it's sound, and it'll meet the requirements. The Littleton Fire Department and I had wonderful discussions about fire sprinkler systems. And we came to an understanding that as long as we protect the underside of this joist with plywood, they're okay omitting the fire sprinkler system.
Plywood or gypsum board?
Pardon?
Plywood or gypsum board?
Gypsum board, half-inch gypsum. Gypsum, for the most part, if you look at what drywall is, it's mostly water. And in a fire condition, you'll actually see it steam, but it holds together and allows a certain amount of fire resistiveness that will keep the floor from collapsing or something like that and really injuring, injuring people. And that, I think that even though this code requirement came into the code this year, I would have came to you and said, let's do something about the underside of these joists. But I was lucky enough that they saw the wisdom, my wisdom, and came up with a code requirement to.
Solve the problem.
Solve the problem. Marijuana.
Jim, let me.
You guys want to talk?
Bruce.
Sprinklers. I've been to probably a handful of apartment fires in my time, and those circumstances create an immediate threat to the adjacent apartment so fast that people don't even have time to react. At least that's been my experience. I really wonder whether it isn't the right thing to do to require sprinkler systems in adjoining apartments or townhouses. And I know you talked about having a two-hour construction time in between, but I got to tell you, I don't, I, from my experience, I think a sprinkled apartment house would have made a tremendous difference to a number of people.
What, what, what we're talking about is single-family homes. Apartment buildings, condos, residential occupancies, other than single-family homes, are required to be sprinkled. So if you're going to go into, if you go into the Hampton Inn, all of that is sprinkled. If you walk into Alta Aspen Grove or all the new apartment buildings, all of those are sprinkled. And rightfully so, because we have a lot of people living in one area. And I think that that's appropriate. I don't think it's, and I think that fire sprinklers have an appropriate place in single-family homes when they're up in the mountains or away from a water supply.
Well, the reason for my question was, it said, we are not recommending fire sprinklers in new one and two-family dwellings and townhouses. And I'm seeing townhouses as connected. So that was, I was seeing a similarity to apartments. And this would indicate to me that connected townhouses would not be required to have sprinklers.
I look at, the codes will do a lot of trade-offs, like what we talked about. I mean, they becoming, you know, they'll trade off fire resistant construction if you sprinkle a building. I don't like mechanical devices and relying on them instead of fire resistant construction. You give me a two-hour wall, it's going to stay there for two hours and people are going to get out of that building. Something can always go wrong with a fire sprinkler system, in my opinion. We can have a water main break, we can have all kinds of things. And that will cause, we could have pipes freezing. We could have all kinds of things. And then, not only do I not have a fire sprinkler system, I don't have, you know, a true separation to protect one unit from the other and fire spreading from one to the other.
I wouldn't buy a trade-off for a less than one, because you put the sprinklers in. I'm seeing in my mind and looking at this, that the sprinklers would be an add-on to the two-hour requirement in between buildings and those kinds of things.
Okay.
Can, can you just clarify, Jim, your definition of a townhouse? Because I think that's.
I think, well, you know, a townhouse is a group of single-family units joined together in a fourplex, or a fiveplex, or a sixplex, something like that. There are, and it's just a single-family home with a common property line. Does that make sense?
And usually multi-story, right?
They can be multi-story, they can be single-story.
Okay.
You don't have somebody living above.
Right, right.
Not like you would in a condo or an apartment.
Like Chateau Beauregard along Lowell on the west side is, meets the description of a townhouse that you just gave.
Chateau Beauregard.
About the 50.
It's on Lowell.
Lowell and Berry down to.
Oh, all of those.
Yes.
Yeah. I would consider those townhouses. You know, there were, those are all, although they are two-story, some of them are single-story.
Yeah, and on the other side of the road, they're actually three-story with a garage underneath.
Right.
And those would be ones that I would say should be sprinkled if they were new construction.
Okay.
Just the way I would see it.
Jim, just to make sure I'm understanding, you're talking about the fire separation between townhomes. Comes from the construction material between the building?
Right.
I mean, between the units?
Right. It's a method of construction that affords a two-hour failure point.
Thank you.
Which does include separation in the attic space?
Yes. So it goes from the foundation all the way up to the roof structure.
Got it. Thank you.
Is anybody else, are we done with fire sprinklers and the underside of this? Or do we have more questions?
I think we're good.
I do. I have one question then. So on the floor joists, so it says, what you're proposing here or suggesting with the gypsum board, that it will delay the failure of the joint by approximately 30 minutes. Without doubt, how long is it?
I have no way of knowing.
But then how do we know it's 30 minutes?
30 minutes is a tested assembly. We know that drywall, half-inch drywall will not fail for at least 20 minutes. By the time you get air in there, then it's probably increased to three, 30 minutes. If you have different thicknesses of drywall, that time is even longer. I talked with the fire marshal, Mr. Hofstra, and volunteered to do a higher degree of drywall to give more of a, and he was okay with just the half-inch.
And, and, I'm in the apartment business, managing business, and firewalls are crucial. As you said, fire systems can go out for whatever reason, but not the wall.
Not the walls.
Cool. All right, thank you.
You know, it's so, it's so important, in my mind, fire resistant construction is, I think, the ultimate in protection for, for any kind of building, where that you have a lot, like in a church, or a clubhouse, or a nightclub or something.
The name of the game is get people time, give people time to get out.
That's it.
Yep.
The building code, the only thing the building code worries about is getting people out of a building. That's my responsibility. Giving them enough time to get out of a building in case of emergency. I don't care about the building, just the people.
Jim?
If a new construction would sprinkle the basement, as an example, where those are the only place those are going to be exposed, can they get an exemption to doing the gypsum board on the bottom of that if it's sprinkled on the basement? And you have that flexibility to do that?
I could do that.
Maggie?
Yeah, so, just for clarification, we had a tornado, which we don't tend to have here, I mean, in Littleton. But if we had a tornado, rips a roof off, and we get lightning or some, or whatever, fire starts, then the fire can jump over that way. But that's a really extraordinary circumstance, right?
I mean, I don't want to say it's extraordinary. When, when you're dealing with. When, when you're dealing with, from fire jumping from one to the other, the code will put a parapet 30 inches high, or if that's not aesthetically enough, they will protect the roof structure with layers of drywall so that it won't burn through.
Well, no, but if you pop, if you suck off the top of the house and there's fire involved, then the fire can leap over, but again, that's extraordinary.
If the roof isn't there, yeah.
Yeah, right? I mean, if we have earthquake and something cracks up, but that's, that's something way beyond what we would normally, anybody would normally expect something else, because even the sprinkler system is not going to work if, if it's ripped out by tornado, or, or an earthquake, or whatever, right? So.
Yeah, again, the codes are the minimum. I mean, you try and plan for every catastrophe, but, you know, what, what we saw in Oklahoma City, or down in Oklahoma, the devastation caused by a tornado, you can't expect when you have 300 mile an hour winds, the structure will stay up.
Okay.
The state, with the people of Colorado approving recreational use for marijuana, the state so far has adopted rules and regulations dealing with administrative issues rather than rules and regulations for marijuana, for the growth of marijuana. If the city council is, is going to allow commercial operations for the manufacturing and growth of marijuana, I'm not concerned with rules and regulations that will deal with that commercial operation. I'm not worried that they're not going to get permits, that they're not going to use licensed contractors, that they're not, you know, going to get building permits. My concern is more the recreational use. And, and we could come up with regulations that might be pertinent, might not be pertinent. I'm not an expert in growing marijuana. I can do a lot of research.
You're just a novice.
I beg your pardon? Just a user?
Novice, novice.
Yeah, I'm a novice at it. The state yet has to promulgate rules, and they're expected to do that late summer, early fall, I think. We can certainly come up with regulations that have been brought up by other communities, but I would not recommend that we do it right now. I think if we're going to write regulations for the use, or this, the, the construction requirements for growing marijuana, that we should wait until what the state has to say, for us to come up with an ordinance, to, to deal with that issue right now, in my mind, may be premature. I mean, I can come up with things, the electrical systems, and we can talk about mechanical systems and ventilation and mold and mildew, and we can talk about a lot of things. And I can come up with those kinds of regulations if you want me to proceed with that. But I think it would be better if we look and see what the state is going to do first.
Bruce, and then Jim.
Well, if, if the, if the law allows people to grow a certain number of plants for personal consumption in their residential dwelling, I mean, I guess there's, there's two elements, and I don't know the answers to them, so I guess I'm just throwing it out, and you guys can come back and, at the appropriate time, and, and offer advice, but it, it would seem that if you've got, I don't know, pick a number, six marijuana plants, that, that maybe there's a minimum level of threshold you need to comply with, or you need to get an inspection to make sure that if you've got, you know, small number of grow lights, I don't know if, if the accoutrements for six plants, if that's the minimum, or six per person, and depending on how many people you've got in the house, you know, there's some threshold that would constitute legal volume of plants that, that could impact the codes, as you sort of described them, with, and I think we need to address that, I'm just speaking for myself. But I think the other thing that, that you worry about is, you know, people can do six, but maybe they do eight, or maybe they do 10, and wait for somebody to, you know, figure out that they're doing more than they should be doing. And at some level, you get beyond a certain point where safety does come into play, and so I guess my concern is, do we sort of have a certain amount of regulation for a minimum number of plants, and then more regulation for plants above a certain level, and so forth and so on, whether they're legal or not? Or do you just sort of say, you know what, if you have any plants, it should be X, because we're concerned that people may abuse the situation and, and get outside the scope of what's, what's prudent, from a safety standpoint? I mean, the thing, it, it's purely health, safety, and welfare-related kind of stuff for, for the residential neighborhoods.
And, and, and I agree with you.
I don't know what the right answer is. I don't know if, you know.
You know, like, the only.
I don't think the state's going to tell us either.
I think they're allowed six plants.
Yeah, I know, yeah, that's true.
But I don't know if that's per household or per.
Per person.
Per person.
Yeah, so if you've got eight, you know, five people in a house, that's 30 plants. That's different than.
But your report is concerned with people putting too much on their system, it's going to cause that.
That, what I'm worried about is the electrical systems.
Regardless of six plants or 100 plants, yeah.
Yeah. You know, and, and I think that homeowners might know that they, might not know that they need a permit. They might not know, you know, they can read books on how to grow stuff, but one of the things that frightened me, that I heard at a meeting when we were talking about marijuana, carbon dioxide can be used to, if I understand this correctly, stimulate growth. Carbon monoxide comes from a blue flame. As a flame is starting on fire, and you get a nice blue flame, you get carbon dioxide. If you have a dirty flame, then you produce, then you produce carbon monoxide. Homegrown have been known to disconnect the vent from a water heater, thinking that they're going to get carbon dioxide. Stuff like that is what scares me. And I think it's education right now, educating is an important factor, dealing with our homeowners, dealing with our residents, and, you know, let's do this safely.
And, and it's, it's not just education for, you know, who's in the house, but it's for your neighbors.
Yes.
You know, and that, that's the other thing, that, that's an element. I mean, they could be doing something to themselves, which is one thing, but if you do something and, you know, you cause a fire or whatever.
Yeah.
I mean, you've got other issues in the neighborhood.
I think one, one of the main, I'm sorry, Bruce, go ahead.
I was just going to say, a few years ago, I, I saw a briefing where they showed photographs of, of interior grows, and I think it would be real, and those photographs were easily available. I think it would be helpful to look at those for council to understand the number of wires and extension cords, and how they overload circuits, and, and intermix hydroponics and water, and, you know. Just to get a sense of it, and then make sure that you have the tools that you need to be able to make that stop, and to, and to have a penalty for it if appropriate, because that was the point of the discussion that was being presented at the time, is the building codes really weren't quite adequate to what it was fire and police and people were, and kids were, were walking into.
I would, okay, Jim, and then Phil.
Well, the way I was reading your memorandum, that any, any in, a living unit that wants to grow their six plants, or up to six plants, requires a building permit and the subsequent inspection in order for them to do that, because you've got to look at the electrical, you've got to look at all the disconnects or reconnections or whatever. If that is the case, I think we would be having money well spent to look at sending a postcard to each residential unit in the city, saying, if you're going to do this, you've got to make sure you get proper permit from the city to do it. Now, half the city is going to be irritated, because they get one of those, because they don't support it anyway, but on the other, we don't know which half that is, so you have to send it carte blanche to everybody.
You know, I, I don't know if a building permit is required for people that are going to grow, because you're going to have those buildings that have, newer buildings that are going to have adequate electrical systems. What we're worried about is extension cords. But dealing with the odors is probably an issue that would have to be added to the building code as an amendment for marijuana grows.
And the mold?
Yeah. And we can talk about dehumidification, and we can talk about, you know, the different kinds of lights that they can use. But I, you know, Jerry, I think that one of the main reasons that I want to try and postpone this is that until the enforcement of, of the rules and regulations, because they haven't been established, the enforcement on, through the district attorney, not knowing what to enforce and not knowing what to enforce, may have been very selective in the types of cases that, that he wants to prosecute. That's probably the main, one of the main reasons, that we can come up with the rules, but who's going to enforce them.
Phil, and then Peggy.
Mine is probably as much a, a comment, which is kind of getting before our, a more general discussion of marijuana, but just reading your comments brought up a few questions, defining what is a secure space?
Mm-hmm.
When we're talking personal grow, does it just mean inside the house with a locked door, or is it something more than that to protect it from the children, particularly as we've seen over this past weekend with ingestion of actually just plants? Some item to, to take a look at is, you know, when you start talking about the electrical outlets and what's required, if there's a, if there's a space, maybe there's a limit in the number of plants per a resident, because, because there's a line that goes into a residence that might lead to an overload or something like that, and I, just the safety aspect of that becomes a concern, and that may require a little bit more research. And certainly, when we're talking about dispensing carbon dioxide and possibly dispensing carbon monoxide inadvertently, has a number of things that just come to mind that say, hey, that, you know, if someone's going to be doing anything like that, they ought to have some sort of sensor that's going to protect at least the, the residence, if not also an exhaust system.
Yeah, that's a good place for a carbon monoxide alarm.
Peggy.
Yeah, I, I'd like us maybe to have a feature in the Littleton Report, but I see this as larger than just this issue, because we've seen some of the things that happen in particularly the multifamily housing, where people aren't doing grows, but they've got overloaded circuits, big time. So we could have potentially Littleton Report and a feature on Channel 8 about related issues, you know? People visit people in the house, maybe, you know, if they see overloaded circuits, they see this, that or the other, for whatever the reason, that they could help call attention to the safety issues. But yes, also very much in terms of this, if you are taking advantage of the new law and doing whatever, be careful of this, but also be careful of it.
I think that that's very important, and it's something that Glenn and I have talked about, about taking advantage of the media to alert people and educate people about the dangers, the, the possible dangers of, of growing marijuana.
And, not that we want to destroy a house or something, but there may be some way to, to mock up exactly what can happen. It seems to me, a couple of years ago, we saw something here, or else I saw it up at the CML Annual Conference, about all this overloading of the circuits, and, and things that happened. So whatever we could do to educate people would be good.
There's a lot of pictures, as Bruce mentioned, I'm sure he's seen them, and I've seen them too, of grows that have kind of been pushed into a house, and the heat gets so high that they have to put a ventilation system in, and the circuits are overloaded, and then they're adding CO2 into the secure space. It's, it's a, it's a scary situation. And I think right now, it's not allowed in multifamily, and I think so it's, and it can't be done outside, so it's really going to be in single-family homes.
Yes, but what's not allowed and what occurs are quite different things.
Right, you're absolutely right.
And so what I'm saying, you go to visit somebody, and you see something, well, number one, you may be there for the wrong reason, but anyway.
Not your neighbor.
But still educating people.
Jim?
Glenn, you just said what's not allowed in, in multifamily?
I think with the, the state, what I read in the state statute was multifamily, you were not allowed to grow within a multifamily structure.
But on the other hand, the amendment says that individuals can grow six plants.
But.
But I, I don't believe in a multifamily structure, so it really limits it to a single-family house. And, and I think that's primarily due to the odors was a big concern.
I would say on this, that I, I understand you wanting to wait until see what more is coming, but I would, I think it probably is good to keep it near to the ground and keep some, even converse with some other municipalities in terms of what they're looking at. I think this is really a situation where nobody needs to reinvent the wheel, and those of us that, that, those cities that have got some, some work started and, you know, kind of working together on this stuff would be, we're going to have the best solution at that point. I think that there's cross issues here. You've got residential safety issues, we, there's a possibility to restrict the amount of square footage they can have so that they don't have huge grows. There's the enforcement issue. There's also the fact that more than six plants per person is, is illegal.
Right.
So it not, that doesn't even, that isn't even a code problem. So there's layers and layers and pieces and parts, and it, it may even behoove us at some point seriously to just have a, a much larger discussion that touches on all these different things, because one of the other issues is insurance. Currently, no insurance carrier will, will, you don't have insurance if your house burns down because of your grow, your SOL.
Right.
If they discover that it's the grow, the dead it, because it's federally insured insurance, so it's, it's done. So what happens when that starts to happen, and there's no insurance and no rebuilding? So it's, I mean, there's just layers and layers and pieces and parts, and we're all just guessing, and we don't know, and so I think just staying, staying on top of due diligence, staying on top of what is everybody else doing, so, because in October, rubber hits the road, we better be ready.
Right.
And October's not that far away. Oh, my gosh, like my Memorial Day's over. You know, it's going to be 4th of July in a month, right? Scary.
I did do a survey of cities in the, in the state, and I got responses from quite a few, probably 15, 20 counties or municipalities, and the vast majority of them, except for the town of Carpendale, and I think the town of Boulder. of Boulder, most cities are just waiting, they're not doing anything.
Okay, next one.
Next one, fees. Can I go back a little bit?
No.
Okay, I'm only going forward. We've talked about this last year during the, during a study session about fees, and again, I'll bring it up this year. I'm recommending that you increase fees for building permits by 10%. In the memo, there are cities that are lower, lower than us, and when I did the, to see where everybody sat on building, building fees, what I did is went to their website and just looked at their fee schedules, is how I came up with all of this. I have no knowledge about what cities are doing during this year, you know, with their building permit fees. We haven't raised fees in 16 years, and that, based on the cost of doing service and so forth, I would recommend that you do increase those by at least 10%.
Jerry, then Peggy, and then Bruce.
I'm not opposed to raising fees, if we know why we're raising fees, but just to raise them 10%, because we haven't raised them in a while, doesn't register with me. But what I would like to know is that we need to raise them maybe 15%, maybe 20%, based on a cost analysis of what it's cost, what it costs your department or whatever in the first place. I don't like the idea of just saying, well, they, they do more, they do less. I would like to know, what does it cost us? Is the idea of the fee is to capture some of your expense, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so I would like to see it based on something besides, we haven't done it in 16 years. I mean, 10% might be the right number, might not be the right number, but again, without it being based on anything other than, I don't know what.
You know, what I can tell you right now, Jerry, if I go back, and it was something that we discussed last year, looking at what it costs to run the building department, looking at the budget just for the building department, we have met, through our revenues in plan reviews and building permit fees, we have exceeded, except for recent years, what our costs are. But that doesn't include the cost of all the other departments that participate in the building permit process, the finance department, the city manager, you know, what Glenn's time is, what HR's time is, what, and all of those costs keep on going up. Just on building permits, you know, we're kind of in a break, breakeven, but it's all the associated costs, I think, that we have to take into account when we're looking at, you know, is it appropriate to raise building permit fees?
And that's my point, it's probably very appropriate to cover all these other non-direct costs. But I would rather have it based on some sort of analysis than to just throw the dice.
Better.
Thanks.
Peggy, and then Bruce.
And I have a couple of questions with the whole fee section. So based on what Jerry said, because that's what I was, part of what I was going to ask, can you, can you factor in approximately the, all those costs of the other departments? I mean, ballparking?
Yeah, yeah, I don't think it would be accurate. I mean, like, it would be totally, you know, this is, you know, the city manager spends 15 hours a month on the building department, you know?
We can survey those different departments.
Yeah, maybe some, something.
Get a good idea of total cost.
Okay. Then, can I ask about the expedited plan reviews and this too? Is that, is that okay?
What of it?
If you, I don't care too much about what the other folks, the other cities do, but if you expedite it, does, do you essentially give that whole fee to whoever, if you have to outsource it? Do you, does it all go to them?
Yes.
So isn't there some staff time involved too, just to even do that?
Yes.
So can you, I mean, I'd like again to see that we cover our costs in doing that. I mean, if, if you can ballpark that too.
Well, I think that the expedited plan review, which, you know, as hurry, hurry, rush, rush, we need to get it done right away, I think it's very important that we look at and charge for that kind of service.
No, absolutely, I'm not, I'm agreeing with you. I just think, so if we, if we outsource it to Jim, but it takes you some time to do the outsourcing, I want to make sure we capture all of that.
Yeah. And I think you would, whether you increase those fees by 25%, 50%, and in most cases 100%.
We're actually recommending a 50%.
Yeah, we're recommending 50%, but, you know.
An expedited review.
Yeah, okay. And then, I appreciate if we're already expediting plans for something.
Yeah, we do it for downtown.
Right, so we're doing that. Are we expediting for anybody else?
You know, homeowners, we always expedite for, whenever possible. Our plan reviewer takes care of, you know, all the plans. She does the commercial, she does the residential. But I frequently, you know, when I'm talking to homeowners at the counter, or something like that, I'll do a lot of basement finish, or patio covers, or things like that, to get the homeowners going.
So who don't we expedite for? Probably council. I'm teasing, I'm just teasing, I mean, so.
You know, I had one recently with the cardiology building, the Feng Shui building, and I can't remember the name of it right now.
South Denver Cardiology.
Yeah, Denver Cardiology. They were.
South Denver.
They needed to get something, they needed to begin construction within two weeks. And we could not.
Just couldn't?
I don't even think it was two weeks, they needed a permit in a week, or something like that, in order to get going on it, you know, because of a crunch timeframe and whatever they were doing. So we had to send it out, and then we lose all the revenue from the plan review fees, you know, that should go to the city. And, and I think that if we don't do something, and whether, whatever that percentage might be, that you decide is adequate.
No, so I mean, I'm, I'm supporting that. I mean, I think, I think we need to cover what we need to cover, absolutely. My question then was a larger one. If we didn't do it for everybody, on what basis would we legally be able to not do it for everybody? That was a, I don't know if that makes sense, but, so if we, I mean, if we can outsource to somebody else when something comes in, and we charge the additional fee, and we do that for everybody.
If we have, say you have two or three contractors that come in, or architects, or, or building owners that say, I need it expedited, and they all come in at the same time, I would send it to different consultants for that to happen. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, so, I mean, nobody would be given preferential treatment. Okay. So yeah, I'm totally supportive of charging what we need to, that the city covers its cost, and then you do what you're doing, paying other people. So, thank you.
Yeah, I was going to just observe, I think at the top of page four, you talk about the city being forced to cut weeds, remove rubbish, the owner gets billed.
Right.
I was just going to ask, is there a way to, a lot of times, you got issues with the homeowner, maybe seniors, maybe disability, some such thing. I mean, I have no problem billing somebody if they just choose not to, but could.
That's what I'm talking about.
Okay, okay.
I'm not talking about, you know, people with disabilities, I'm not talking about people that.
Seniors that are just can't get out.
Seniors, I'm not talking about that.
Okay, I did, I just wanted to clarify.
That kind of loops back into that community, neighborhood.
Right.
Support, help out.
Totally agree.
I mean, that, those are, in my mind, sacred cows.
I would say on the expedited, I would not have a problem going 100% on that. I mean, anytime you are doing something, and you've got a rush, you pay rush fees. You are paying for a.
Service, premium.
Yeah, a super service, and you got time or money. They got no time, so we need the money.
I like your thinking.
I do too. I was kind of being middle of the road.
Me too.
We've talked about valuation tables in the past, and all that is, is a means to establish a true value. And, you know, every three years, we present these to you guys, and it's all based on, you could either say, you know, the gross national product, or you could say the rate of inflation, they're all kind of tied together, and that's what they use when they determine cost per square foot. And this will be presented, valuation tables will come to you in a resolution, anything to do with fees, you know, that you approve, will come to you in a resolution when we adopt the building codes.
Can I ask about the weed removal piece, and so, the weed removal piece and so forth? I'm just curious, it says staff is recommending this fee, should also apply when the city has to remove snow from private or public property? Where do we, whose public property do we have?
Maybe, maybe that was the wrong choice of words. I was thinking of sidewalks.
Pardon?
If it's in the street right of way, it'd be public. And you're required, as a homeowner, you're required to shovel the public sidewalk, so technically that's public, that's public land that they have to shovel.
Oh, as in somebody's sidewalk, that's technically the city's sidewalk, but we have to shovel it?
Yeah.
Okay.
And repair it.
Yeah.
Because I have a lot of sidewalk.
I mean, I thought maybe we were talking about removing it from the county administration building or something.
No, you know, like, during a snowstorm, the amount of calls we get from people that don't, you know, that walk to the bus stop, or walk to downtown, that, people that don't shovel their sidewalk, I would, I would love to be able to hire somebody to go shovel them all, and then charge them for it.
Yeah, no, it's okay, I just was not underst, I wanted to know who.
Oh, it also might be when we have to abate any code violation, and that doesn't mean just trash, and it doesn't mean just cutting weeds and stuff like that, but if, you know, something is happening on the outside of a building, that could be, you know, dangerous to, to the neighbors, or something like that, and we have to abate it, I think that's, you know, and we give fair warning, I mean, it's not something we're going to tell you Monday and go Tuesday, we're going to give you time, you know, to take care of those. So this was just, in my mind, just kind of taking some consistency and conformity, and putting it all into what we have to do for abatement.
Actually, I do have a quick question on the roofing. So you used to be able to put a roof on a roof?
Right.
And then we said, then they said, no, you can't do that, you've got to strip it down to the.
Right.
And now you're saying, they're saying you can put a roof on a roof?
Right.
And you're saying, no, we don't want you to?
Right. Well, and it all has to do with the longevity of the roof covering. You know, what, what we're saying is that, when they came up with the rule, you've got to strip it down to deck, that was the best thing in the world. Because now you can look at the sheeting, you know, all that plywood, or whatever, and make sure it's not rotten, or delaminated, or something like that. We can look and make sure that the flashing is done correctly, you know, whether it be in the valleys, or around chimneys, or windows, or, and vertical, or horizontal, we can look at all those things. And I think that that's for the benefit of our citizens, not for the benefit of necessarily roofing companies or insurance companies.
Well, I would suggest that there be a consideration in there, based on the number of years. So for example, a hailstorm comes through, and this happened, it didn't, it, some folks in Parker, and it could happen here, we get them, and they got a hailstorm in one year. The next year, they got another one, had to replace their roof that year, then had to replace their roof the second year, and then in that second year, they got a second hailstorm. So they had three new roofs in less than a year and three months. And so to strip it, keep stripping it off, I mean, I think that there's a three-roof weight loader, maybe it's a two, was what they were doing. But I'm just saying that there may be circumstances where it, it might not be necessary, you know, you just put a new roof on last year, and you'd get another hailstorm, because it costs more to have the guys strip your roof off than to put another roof on top of it. So it's an additional expense. And if, and if that's the purpose, to make sure everything's okay, they already did that a year ago, it couldn't have gone bad in a year.
Most insurance companies have code upgrades, all citizens have code upgrades. When it comes to, and if you're just talking about hailstorms and stuff like that, you know, they have to pay deductibles to homeowners, you know, but every insurance agent, and I talk to so many insurance agents that want to know what the requirements are for re-roofing.
Well, most deductibles now are a percentage of the cost of the roof. It's not a flat anymore, it's a percentage.
I don't know, I don't know what that is.
It changed the.
I mean, we can look at that.
Insurance companies, because of the hail, the quantity of hail in Colorado, they've shifted that. I would just say, just check, just.
We can do that during our pre-roof inspection.
Yeah, yeah.
I want to move to the other initiatives, changes, and talk also about roofing that you've got in there, which is the one, two, three, four, fifth bullet down. It says in the same re-roofing section, you've added that, in case of a partial re-roofing, which is insurance company dictated, the used shingle shall be of the same type, same color, and by the same manufacturer. Well, that may not be possible, the manufacturer may not be in business, and so you're going to have to have some kind of allowance that allows to get as close as you possibly can to the type and color, because you may not have the same manufacturer availability. And I understand about trying to have conformity and uniformity of colors, I think that's important for the aesthetics of the building, but to require it be the same manufacturer, I think is going to have to be looked at.
The reason I came up with this is calls from different insurance companies, you know, saying, we're only going to do half the roof. And they wanted to know what our requirements were. Was there a percentage of, if you have 50% of the roof, that you have to do the whole roof? And say, no, we don't have that requirement. We only ask that you match the color, manufacturer, and, and the type of shingle. And then it's, do you have that in writing? I said, no, I don't. That's just common sense. But that didn't go well.
But the manufacturers don't stay in business, that's my point.
Or they discontinue that color, color of shingle.
Or they discontinue that color.
Yeah, you can have a different dialogue.
Shift it a little bit, right?
I just think you need some flexibility in what that's going to be.
So you want to eliminate manufacturer, and just say?
Or maybe you could just say.
When possible.
Yeah, when possible, or to the best of your ability.
Okay.
That type of thing.
Yeah, give yourself a wiggle room.
There's, like, I've got a 20-year-old roof on mine, and the insurance company won't, won't do anything, and they said, you just fix your little broken shingles and move on. So I had some stuck in a shed that I could put on there, but if I didn't, that's not going to happen.
And that may be also something for the Littleton Report, buy extra shingles when you roofed.
Then you go to refer to the storage ordinance. Jim, I want to mention on the shingles thing, when we did our roof, not too long ago, a few years ago, they of course had to go down the decking, and they did find two boards that needed to be replaced. And it could have been an issue had they not been replaced, so I don't have an issue with that part at all.
You know, we, during the, during the pre-roof inspection, which we do, we do two inspections on a roof, before they, and, you know, after they strip everything off, you know, we're able to walk the deck, look for delaminated, delaminated plywood, we can look at, you know, certain roof coverings require a solidly sheeted deck. You can put asphalt shingles have to be on a solidly sheeted deck. Shake shingles. asphalt shingles have to be on a solidly sheeted deck. Shake shingles, or shake, or wood shakes themselves can be on space sheeting, where that there can be a gap of to two inches in between the boards. You can't put shingles, asphalt shingles, on space sheeting. So, that's another issue, and especially in the older houses, the older sections of, where that they were built with gaps back in the early 1900s, 1910s, 1920s, when they used wood shingles as a roof cover. So, that's kind of another issue that we might run into that, is the sheeting, the plywood adequate for the installation of asphalt or fiberglass shingles? But we can look at those during plan, or during the pre-roof, and come up with criteria.
I think Jim has been all too much fun, so...
Y'all done? Can I recap a little bit, just to get consensus on fire sprinklers? And I'll bring you what, you know, we'll try and come up with justification for the fee increase. Expedited plan reviews, we're going to take to 100%. You'll get the valuation tables. Oh, does council want to continue with energy savings devices? Do you want to continue to rate, or eliminate fees and taxes for people to put on photovoltaic systems or solar systems, or put in wind generators? Do you want to continue with that? Okay. Then I would ask that you add to that geothermal.
I think I had pointed out that one to you.
Okay.
Jim, a quick question on that, maybe you know. How far down does someone have to go for a geothermal?
You know, it's all different. It all depends how much land you have. You know, you'd love to say, go down five feet where the temperature is consistent at some odd 50 degrees or 55 degrees. If you don't have enough, you know, you can, you can dig a big pit and just run your tubing through there. If you're on a little lot, then you go straight down. And that might be 500 feet, depending upon how much pipe you need in order to... So, it's all, all kind of different. The guys that live in my area that have land, we would just do it. Of course, I couldn't afford that to begin with.
I know it's not without cost.
No, it is. I wasn't planning on taking this much time.
Boy, I gave you 10 minutes. You're good at sticking to that. All right. Thank you very much. I think, anybody have anything else?
Anybody want my eye joists?
No, that's flammable.
Give it to Peggy. Take it home, Peggy. It's a good education tool.